I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember White. Good evening, everyone. 1,900th regular meeting of Livonia City Council. This is a voting meeting. Minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting, which is scheduled to be held on Monday, July 20, 2020. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember White?
Here.
Councilmember McCullough?
Here.
Councilmember Donavick?
He's on mute.
He's here, but we'll just keep moving.
Councilmember Jolly?
I'm mute. You're on mute.
Councilmember Jolly?
Present.
Councilmember Toy?
Here.
Vice President Barr?
Here.
President McIntyre?
Here. And it appears that we may have all members of council with us this evening, and that Councilmember Donavick, are you here?
I am present, Madam President.
We have all members of council with us this evening. At this time, I'd like to have the presentation of the minutes, and these are the minutes from the 1,899th regular meeting of the city council that was held on June 22, 2020. And Madam Clerk, could you please take the vote on approval of the minutes? Well, I guess first, we, sorry, first, we need a motion.
Oh, boo.
Second.
Support from Jolly. Now, Madam Clerk, would you please take the, would you please take the vote on approval of the minutes?
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Donavick?
Yeah.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the minutes are approved. At this time, I will go to the council if anyone has any announcements, tributes, or recognition that they'd like to make. Madam Chair? Yes.
I'm sorry, where's the hand thing? Okay. I don't know, is Dr. Jeffers on by any chance from Schoolcraft College?
I don't, I don't know, but Councilmember Toy, could you get a little bit closer to the microphone, please? We're having a hard time hearing you. We don't, we don't want to miss any of your wise words tonight.
Okay, Madam President, I was asking if Dr. Jeffers was on Zoom here tonight yet? We do have a tribute for him. He's going to be retiring from Schoolcraft College. The off range for him to be here this evening, and I just wanted to make sure, and our council president has a tribute. Should we wait? Maybe, was he told seven o'clock or eight o'clock?
Councilmember Toy, my suggestion would be that we go ahead and read it.
Okay.
Then perhaps if he is in his office, we could go over and, and present this to him in a socially distance-appropriate kind of way. But I'm going to read it for the benefit of all the members of the community that we have on the line tonight, if that's okay, because he serves such an important role.
Absolutely.
And people that know Schoolcraft.
Yes.
Absolutely know Dr. Jeffers. But not everybody in our community is involved with Schoolcraft and, and may not realize who he is and the incredible things he's done during his tenure as president of Schoolcraft College. So I'm going to go ahead and read this. The commendation that comes from the offices of the mayor and city council. Whereas Dr. Conway A. Jeffers holds his PhD from the University of Pittsburgh and Schoolcraft College in 1982. He was the vice president of instruction and student services, becoming president in July of 2001. And whereas Dr. Jeffers has been an active leader servicing on various committees within the Michigan Community College Association, was a member of numerous local organizations, and served as a commissioner of the governor-appointed position with the 21st Central Education Commission and with the Midwestern Higher Education Compact, representing the state of Michigan. And whereas, Dr. Jeffers has also served as co-chair of the president's task force on state appropriations, representing community colleges to explore parity issues, fiscal responsibility, and budget considerations. And whereas, Dr. Jeffers continues to work with businesses involved with product development and production of revenue, with the continuous development of businesses on college-owned land, which has expanded significantly on the Schoolcraft campus since serving as president. Now therefore, the mayor does take this opportunity to join with the Livonia City Council to congratulate and commend Dr. Jeffers on his commitment to the city, whose hard work has been an integral part of this community. Signed by the mayor and all the members of the city council. So I'm sure you have some words to offer, Councilmember Toy. I'd just like to thank Dr. Jeffers for everything he's done. I think everyone who knows him agrees that he is a scholar, he is a gentleman, he is a visionary, and just a remarkable man, and he's going to be missed tremendously. But I'm sure I'm not alone in wishing him the happiest of retirements, knowing that he will continue to be busy. And I'm sure some of the other council members would probably like to add their words. Councilmember Toy?
Oh, thank you, Madam President. I, I'm a little bit older than some of you, so I served on the Schoolcraft College Board back when we hired Dick McDowell, did that search for him, and he brought with him Conway Jeffers. Dr. Jeffers has just been outstanding, as our president has just explained, but more than that, he's been a good friend. And he's done just outstanding things for Schoolcraft College and its students, and has maintained the respect of not only our community, but all the communities Schoolcraft College serves, as well as expanded that campus and has ensured of its vitality for years to come. And I am just so proud to say that I was amongst those that hired Dick McDowell, who then brought Conway with them, and we continued that legacy of those two gentlemen out there. They've done fabulous, fabulous things, and Schoolcraft's known throughout the state. I had the great pleasure, when I was in the legislature, of working with Dr. Jeffers to secure funds and funding for Schoolcraft College as well, when I was on appropriations and such. So he is a, he is just outstanding, and as Kathleen has explained, it'll be hard to replace them, although I know they've chosen the new president out there after the search. But he is just, all of you know him, and you know the kind of work and the kind of person he is. Very kind, genteel, and not a bad word had ever come out of his mouth. So he didn't treat me real, he didn't, he didn't teach me that, but he did a great job. So anyhow, I can't say enough good things about him. Thank you very much. And I'm sad that he, that we're not live, because he deserves just such, you know, praise, and we'll have to go over there. Maybe he'll buy lunch, you never know. Not at Bates either. Okay, moving right along, Madam Chair.
Anyone else? All right, well, thank you very much, Councilmember Toy, for those words.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I was a little slow on the trigger there. Just, I'll just add a few brief comments. My first interaction with Dr. Jeffers was back in the mid to late 2000s, when I was working with the Education Alliance with the Livonia Public Schools, and then the Marketing Consortium. And then I was on an advisory council for Dr. Leif at the time with him. And I look back now, and I kind of laugh at myself, because, you know, I was, I was a young guy, mid to late twenties, and while I, I was on those boards for a reason, I still had a lot to learn. And I look back now at some of the things that I said back then, that I just looked foolish. And I never had anything but graciousness from Dr. Jeffers. So just one more little anecdote for, for how he's impacted one person's life, and certainly, he's deserving the recognition that we give him tonight.
Vice President Barr, it's hard to imagine you ever saying anything foolish, and it's hard to imagine that there was some time that you were doing all this and even younger than you are today. So, you know, I had to, you know, I had to throw that in there. Anyway, anyone else? Councilmember White?
You mentioned his scholarly nature, and that's well-known, but he's got a quality, I think, that is the most important quality that anyone can have, and that is kindness. Kindness to everybody, everybody he comes in contact with. And so for that, he'll, he has always been appreciated and will be missed dearly. Thank you.
Absolutely. And we will find a time when we can go over and see him in person and socially distanced to prevent him, to present him with the certificate. All right, with that, we move on to introduction of our department heads. And we have with us this evening, and I'm not going to try to go in order of where we sit. I can't remember that order. I'll go in order on my screen. Our outstanding city attorney, Paul Burnier. Our outstanding city engineer, Mr. Todd Zalinsik. Our director of economic development and planning and many other things, Mr. Mark Charamina. Our outstanding information systems director, Casey O'Neil, who again has kept everything going during this long period of doing everything virtually. I see that we have the director of administrative services, Dave Varga, on with us tonight. And let's see, I think that's, oh, and Judy, where did Judy go? And our, let's see, our, our director of legislative services, Judy Preby. And let me just look quickly and see if I'm missing anybody. We have our city clerk, sorry, Susan Nash, with us this evening. And I think I've covered everyone, and my apologies if I've missed any of our, any of our distinguished department heads. And I'd also like to say a special welcome to our former mayor, Jack Angerbretson, who's joined us this evening as an audience member. Always appreciate having the engagement and support of our past elected officials and our past mayors. And Mayor Angerbretson served not only as mayor, but also president of the city council. So with that, I'll go on to my announcements. I have two announcements this evening. One is, we have new data on agenda item number 11. I will reference that new data when we reach, when we reach item 11. And we'd also like to take this opportunity to wish a very happy birthday to our city clerk, Susan Nash, who will be celebrating her birthday next Tuesday, July 14. So happy birthday, Madam Clerk. Celebration, and we wish you all the best, and it's a pleasure and a joy to work with you.
Madam Chair, point of order on that. Can we get around the age you are?
A what?
Are you old enough to be clerk?
I am old enough to be clerk. I'm actually going to be in age where both numbers are the same.
Oh, good. Wow, 22.
22, that came quick.
Yes, it did come quick.
All right. If we have no other announcements at this time, I will go to audience communication. And it looks like we have three members, four. I will just start calling on people as they, as they appear on my screen. And I would like to remind everyone during audience communication, each participant has three minutes to address the council on any item, not on this evening's agenda. And we, we set aside half an hour at the beginning of the council meeting for audience communication. If we're not able to reach everyone who, or accommodate everyone who wishes to speak in the first 30 minutes, we set aside as much time as we need at the end of the meeting. So anyone who didn't have an opportunity to address the council may do so at the end of the meeting. And we'll go ahead with someone who, who appears on my screen, as I apologize if I don't get the name right. I go?
Good evening.
Yes, my name is, my name is Mary Weigle.
Good evening.
I have lived in Livonia for 49 years. I have lived in Livonia for 49 years. Our children are, went all the way through Livonia schools.
Madam President?
Yes.
I, maybe Casey can, sorry, Mary. I think Casey can weigh in here. I think, Mary, you might have your TV on. So we're getting an echo?
Oh, you're right. I just turned it off. I'm so sorry.
No problem. We, we're all learning better through this technology. All right, Ms. Weigle, please start over, and you, you have a fresh three minutes.
I just turned my TV off. Is that better?
That's perfect. Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. I just wanted to say that my husband and I have lived in Livonia for 49 years, and we love this city, and we are very, very supportive of our police department and all the other people that serve us so well. We know about the billboard that has been put up at the Redford-Livonia area, and we find that to be very disturbing. I think it would be just so much better if we could all focus our energies on what we can do to be helpful to each other instead of what is happening now. The few interactions that we have had with the Livonia Police during our time here have been only positive. They have always been respectful. They have always been very prompt in dealing with issues. And it's just, it saddens us. So we just want people to know that we support our police, and we have no idea what we would do without them. Thank you.
Thank you very much for taking the time to join us this evening, Ms. Weigle. Thank you for your comments. We go to Michael. Let's see, do we have Michael yet? Michael, good evening. I think we still have Michael muted. Trying to unmute Michael. There we go. Good evening, Michael.
Hey, good evening, everybody. I felt it was important to join in this Zoom meeting today to express my feelings, being a resident of the city of Livonia for 28 years, and my experiences of raising my family here. I've raised my family here. I've had their friends in my house. I've experienced firsthand the diversity that Livonia has. Their friends come into my house. Friends are of all races and all ethnic backgrounds. They've all been welcomed to come into my house. I've never heard any bad experiences from them when they were growing up about anything going on in Livonia. They've all appreciated the quality of life that Livonia offers everybody. I'm proud of the city that I live in. I'm proud of the first responders who protect Livonia. I'm proud of the first responders and police, even the police who have ticketed my wife and ticketed my sons. Myself, I've never been ticketed, so obviously, I'm the best driver in this house. So, you know, it just, in closing, I just want to say thank you to my city leaders, like all of you. I want to say thank you to Livonia Police and Fire, all the first responders, who all are providing such essential services to Livonia with a minimal amount of appreciation these days, and that saddens me. 99% of everything going on is positive, but yet the 1% wants to grab all the headlines because they shout loud it. So I just wanted to take a minute with you all to shout as loud as them that Livonia is a great community for everybody that decides to move here and live here, and I thank you all.
Thank you very much, Michael. Appreciate your taking the time to call in and your comments. Next, we'll go to Mr. Jim Beringhaus. Good evening, Mr. Beringhaus.
Thank you, President McIntyre, and thank you, city council, for allowing me the time this evening. Like the prior residents who spoke earlier, I feel it's important to make some comments as well. I fully support the Livonia Police Department, as well as the entire Livonia community. The Livonia Police Department has a history of a high level of service and professionalism to our community. As Chief Cade shared with the community, I think these efforts really speak for themselves. For the first six months of the year, over 20,000 calls, 1,000 arrests, and in all that activity, only 13 incidents required the use of force, which to me is indicative of a very highly trained, highly disciplined, very professional law enforcement organization. Their excellence has been noted. The Livonia Police Department is really one of the few police departments in Michigan that's been accredited by the Michigan Association of Police Chiefs. And recently, there was additional information released by the city that the Campaign Zero Program for Safe Policing has a number of standards, I believe eight, and many of these standards, the Livonia Police Department has had in place since the 1990s. In terms of myself, I've had the pleasure of working with the Livonia Police Department through the Livonia SERD program. That was my initial contact with the Livonia Police Department, the personnel that I met with and that trained me, highly knowledgeable, highly professional, again, a very, very well-run organization. I'd like to commend Mayor Brosnan's efforts to have a conversation on equality in the city of Livonia with all residents. However, I do have some issues with the billboard. I think it unfairly communicates an unfair claim against both the Livonia Police Department and the Livonia community. In my mind, when you mention Livonia, you hear responses such as great neighborhoods and neighbors, great schools, safe community, and an outstanding police department. In my mind, and in the mind I feel of a lot of Livonia residents, this is what Livonia's all about. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Beringhaus. Very much appreciate those comments. Next, we will go to Ms. Char Beringhaus. And let's see, good evening, Ms. Beringhaus. Let's see.
Good evening. Good evening, President McIntyre and members of the city council. Before I begin my brief remarks, I'd like to thank each one of you for your selfless dedication and service to our city. My name is Char Beringhaus, and I'm a resident of Livonia. I'd like to take the opportunity this evening to express my full support of the Livonia Police Department and Chief Cade and his fine leadership. They continue to keep Livonia one of the safest cities in which to live. They enforce our laws without regard to age, race, or gender. As a beneficiary of several other speeding tickets over the last 45 years, I can attest to that. During my career as a teacher in Livonia Public Schools, I've had the opportunity to work with and get to know several of the officers assigned to our school. They have been some of the finest individuals with the highest moral character, and I have been consistently proud of the work that they do and the lives that they have touched daily. They are truly engaged in serving all Livonia residents and hold their best interests at heart. The billboard that popped up on the freeway today just makes me sad. In no way does it represent who we are as Livonians or our Livonia Police Department, who perform a service for each one of us. I'm a proud Livonia and couldn't be a stronger supporter of our LPD. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Beringhaus. Appreciate your calling in and your comments. Next, we're going to go to our, there we go, I hit the wrong unmute. Now I gotta hit this again. I see our former, and I keep hitting the button, Mr. Mayor trying to, there we, there we go, I believe. I see our former mayors, former city council president, former many things. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam President and council members. I've been with you during most of your Zoom meetings, and I want to commend you and each of your colleagues and all of the staff members that participate for doing such a great job during this difficult time. I've conducted some city business via Zoom. I've been on other Zoom meetings, and it's not the same as being there in person, but it, it has worked well. And I just think that the council and the staff have done just a really superb job during this difficult time. I want to pause for a moment. First of all, I think Jim Beringhaus made comments that I would just put a ditto under everything he said. I think that he, he's an exceptionally well-informed young man, and he, he spoke from the heart, and he made some very, very good points. I, I'm really concerned about this sign that we're talking about. I'm offended by it. And I'm offended by it because the message is implied that Livonia has issues and problems that just aren't true. Our current police chief, Curtis Cade, leads the LPD in a most, in a most ethical and high standard of performance. He would never make any kind of breach of ethics in any way regarding treating people differently due to their skin color or for any other reason. He just wouldn't do that, and neither will the people that work for him. They're highly trained. They're well-led by command officers and others that are in charge that train regularly. They work real hard and doing their job to keep Livonia safe, and they do that job exceptionally well. Curtis Cade is completely honest and ethical beyond reproach, and the same can be said for his five predecessors, all of whom I knew well. And I, I think that the slander that's being aimed in their direction by that billboard is, it's just hard to, hard to even understand why anybody would put something up like that unless they had some evidence. And if they have the evidence, let them bring it forward. In the meantime, I would like to think that perhaps the Law Department could look into whether or not the city and/or the police department have in fact been slandered. And if so, look into what kind of recourse we may have available to us to deal with those who have facilitated the installation of the billboard. I haven't seen it, but I'll just make one final comment, and that is that while driving, since this matter has first surfaced, I have tried to discern the race, or color, or even gender of the person in the car in front of me in broad daylight, and I can't do it. And I don't think that a police officer will light up a driver to pull them over until they pull around them to see who they're looking at. And I guess the point is, is that I think that this is a baseless claim, has no foundation, and other than that, I, I guess that that's really all I have to say. I don't want to take up your whole meeting, but thank you all for a very, very good job that you're doing. And stand firm, stand tall, and stand for supporting our police department, because, boy, they're, they're doing a really, really tough job each day. They don't know when a simple traffic stop is going to turn into a life-threatening situation, and they just do it well. So stand behind them, and I hope that each of you will take that into consideration in anything that comes down the road. Thank you very much for permitting me this time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mary. Next, we will go to Ms. Martha Tasnik. Good evening, Ms. Tasnik.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate this time. I also, like the previous callers, wanted to just reach out and thank Chief Cade for his leadership, and thank all the men and women who serve our community and keep us safe here in Livonia. And I'm urging my fellow citizens to do the same. As a teacher here in Livonia, I've been fortunate enough to get to know some of our office liaisons assigned to our buildings, and I've heard many stories of how they've used their own money to fund Christmas presents, to provide temporary lodging for families. You know, they're always active when we have our Goodfellows, you know, food drive at the school that I work at. They're some of the best people that I've gotten to know over the years in my service at Livonia Public Schools. So they never talk about, you know, that they're doing it because of certain race or ethnicity or anything like that. This is just good people being good people. So I really hope that more citizens will come forth and share positive stories about our Livonia Police Department, you know, whether it's on social media or talking to their friends, because we, they need to know how much we actually appreciate their service. Livonia is a great city, and it's a safe city, and they have a huge part of that. So, you know, if you see a Livonia police officer, make sure you thank a Livonia police officer. And that's all I really wanted to say, but thank you for your time.
Thanks, Ms. Tasnik. Appreciate your calling in or zooming in and your comments. Next, we go to someone who shows up on my screen as Scotch Muffin. Good evening, Scotch Muffin. Good evening, Scotch Muffin. Oh, let's see. It's unmuted now. Let me try again. Maybe Casey can help me out, because I'm having a difficult time getting, Casey, are you able to, there we go. Good evening, Scotch Muffin.
Good evening. My name is Heather. I'm a Livonia resident. I am a property owner, and I'm also a voter, Councilwoman McIntyre. I am looking for the City Council to make a formal statement regarding their commitment to anti-racism, as so many other organizations around the world have. I request that the City Council assist residents with obtaining information about our Police Department, information which should be easily available to us. The police in this city are not unappreciated, the police in this city, in fact, I would say are close to worshipped. The police have, as far as I can tell, not been held accountable to the public in any kind of formal or evidence-based way in the recent past or possibly ever. It seems it is uncomfortable for both the Police Department and many in Livonia to have their unchecked power called into question. So that's what we're seeing right now, is a lot of discomfort. As far as racial profiling, I'm hearing from many, many white people who do not believe that racism exists in Livonia, or that racial profiling does not exist in Livonia. If we had data, we would be able to show whether this happens or not, but as it seems some people do not know, this data has been requested multiple times in multiple ways, and it's either not information that is collected, which is a problem, or it's not being provided to us, which is also a problem. Racial profiling exists. We have many, many, many stories from many people who live in Livonia, who work in Livonia, who drive through Livonia, who have experienced it. Everyone has bias to think that police officers don't have it, is naive. Everyone has it, and it can't be trained out of you a few hours a year. It exists. There's no room for any of this. The billboard, which I am proud to have donated towards and which I firmly believe in, is a response to the lack of information that was provided on multiple attempts. Thank you.
Thank you very much for taking the time to call in and for your comments. Next, we will go to what shows up as Rob's One Math Book. And again, there we go. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam President. My name is actually Bob Stevenson, prior Chief of Police in Livonia and the current Executive Director with the Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police. And I'm calling in tonight to express my disgust in the bulletin board that was put up, which is extremely damaging to the fine officers of the Livonia Police Department. Unfortunately, one of the hardest things is to disprove a negative, and when somebody throws out this type of allegation, it's very difficult to disprove it. So I would like to talk about actual things that we have done and the department had done. During my tenure as Police Chief, the seven years, we received two complaints to the Michigan Department of Civil Rights in regards to racial complaints. Both of those, I'm proud to say, were unfounded. We were very much active in training our officers about bias-based policing, and then after I left the department, I'm proud to say Chief Cade, I believe, took it to another level. He's trained his officers in implicit bias, which your previous caller talked about. Somebody else had mentioned the department had become accredited through the Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police. Many of the today's buzzwords, such as bias-based policing, emergency warning systems, duty to intervene, the Livonia Police Department has had in place for many years, and this was all under the leadership of Curtis Cade. Anybody, if they want to talk about transparency, could go to the Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police, look at the accreditation dropdown, and you will see every single policy that the Livonia Police Department has, along with the minimum standards that they have to have to attain that accreditation. I'm extremely proud of the Livonia Police Department and more proud of the current administration, that they've been extremely proactive in addressing these issues. They have trained their officers, and it's extremely unfortunate that somebody has put out this type of information, which is so hard to disprove. So with that, I would just say that I'm proud of the Livonia Police Department, and I'm proud of the city of Livonia. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you for your long and outstanding service to our community. We miss you, but we're happy you're enjoying a retirement, well, not really a retirement, retirement from us, but as you mentioned, you're the Executive Director of the Michigan Chiefs of Police, so you're continuing to serve our, serve our state. So thank you, Chief. Always good to hear from you. Appreciate your perspective and your comments. All right, and our final member for audience communication, our final participant, is Mr. Carlo. Good evening, Carlo.
Good evening, Madam President. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to thank you and the rest of the council, as well as the other members there this evening. I am a professional engineer. I'm also, I also tutor statistics to the students in Livonia. I've been doing this for about 10 years. It's something that I like, and statistics helps us to understand how to interpret data, how to make decisions properly using the scientific principles. And I do not believe too many people in the world, because statistics is very hard, appreciate the fact, how to make a decision using statistical tools. So the reason I bring that up is because many comments, some comments have been made this evening where people would like data. Well, okay, I'm sure that that data can be provided, but I am absolutely sure that there are policies in place within our Police Department, as there are in the some 20,000 cities across this nation. I mean, I looked it up. We have roughly 20,000 cities. This is year 2020, and I'd like, I'd like to tell everyone that's listening, it is my belief that the, the percentage of police officers that are not doing their job properly is very small. That is my opinion. I believe that somebody can back that up. And for us as a nation now to start, how should I say, beating up on police officers or insulting them is just unconscionable. I respect the police, even though I've been pulled over, as some, some prior speakers have said, multiple times, maybe no turn on red, or maybe, you know, rolling to a stop sign or something. You know what? It's okay. I, I pay my dues, I pay my fines. The police are doing their job, but the police are doing much more than that. They are protecting us, and I would hate to see it, Madam President and others, that if we dampen the spirits of the police force, I would hate to see it if some of them decided that they were going to leave, or they're going to, or not, we would not be able to draw the very talented people that we do need in the police force. I think, and my wife and I took a ride on telegraph, driving northbound toward I-96, and we saw this sign here, I don't know if you can see it or not, if, but at any rate, the sign says, "Driving While Black, Racial Profiling Just Ahead, Welcome to Livonia." We were quite insulted. I took a photograph of that. It's a, it's a sign that has five seconds on and maybe about 50 seconds off, but we were very insulted because we do not believe that racial profiling is being practiced. What we do believe is being practiced is statistical and probability-based type stops. I might be stopped because I have, I'm driving erratically, or I might be stopped for a number of reasons. So I would urge who's ever behind this movement to consider carefully. We have a very good police force. We want to keep the talent onboard. They protect us, they protect all of us. And as a tutor, I accept all comers, whoever wants my services. I do not care what their skin color, ethnicity, religion, I do not care. I, I've taught everyone that has emailed me, and will continue to do so. But I believe that this is 2020, and we have to have a different mindset. We have a very good nation here. There are very few bad apples.
Carlo, thank you, and I have to tell you, your, your time is up, but really appreciate your taking the time to join us this evening. You've been very helpful over the years of sending information with data in it, and it's appreciated, and we would like to, I know I would like to follow up a few about some of your statistical ideas, but thank you so much.
Thank you, and thank you all.
All right, thank you. Good night. All right, and that brings us to the end of audience communication. That's half an hour, and I don't see anyone else waiting to speak, so we will move ahead with the, with the rest of our agenda, beginning with the consent agenda. Items one through seven are listed on this evening's consent agenda, and they are voted on as one item. It doesn't mean that they are any less important than any other items, but rather during, in our study meeting, they were determined not to be controversial in nature. And I do want to clarify, and now I moved all my notes around, I do want to clarify one thing, because this is a little bit unusual. Item number two, which is a request for council approval on a lot split, is on the consent agenda, but it's on the consent agenda as a denying item, so I wanted to mention that. Let me go back to the panelists, and council, do I have, Mr. Jolly, did you want to wait on moving ahead on the agenda? Or did you want to, did you want to offer action on the consent agenda? I'm sorry.
I wanted to offer an approving for the consent agenda.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Support from Councilmember White. And with that, we can go ahead, and if the clerk would please take the vote on approval of the consent agenda.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the consent agenda is approved unanimously. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll move ahead with unfinished business, beginning with item number eight. This is a roll call vote. This is regarding a proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinances as amended. This comes to us from the Department of Law regarding petition 2020-02-03-01 submitted by Zymet Wozniak and Associates behalf of Schoolcraft College to request to vacate a section of the existing water main easement within the Schoolcraft College campus located on the east side of Hagerty Road between Six Mile and Seven Mile Roads, and the addresses are 1-8600 Hagerty Road and 1-7950 College Parkway in the northwest quarter and southwest quarter of Section 14. And this was Council Resolution 319-19, and the first reading was given by Councilmember Laura Toy on Monday, June 22, 2020. Council.
Oh, Madam President?
Yes.
I'm happy to give a second reading now on July 6, I think this is.
All right, so we have a second reading offered by Councilmember Toy. Is there any discussion? Anyone from the audience like to comment on this? Seeing no one, if, Madam Clerk, if you would please go ahead and take the roll call vote.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Yes.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the amendment passes unanimously in this ordinance. This amendment to the Code of Ordinances will become effective upon publication in the newspaper. Going on with unfinished business, item number nine is also a roll call vote. This proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinances is amended. This comes to us from the Department of Law regarding petition 2020-02-03-02 submitted by Woodhaven Retirement Community. This is a request to determine whether or not to vacate a section of the existing water main easement located on the south side of Wentworth Avenue, West Middle Belt Road, 29667 Wentworth Avenue in the southeast quarter of Section 14. It's Council Resolution 62-20. The first reading was given by Council Vice President Scott Barr on Monday, June 22, 2020.
Madam President?
Yes?
I will offer a second reading on this item.
All right, thank you. Do we have any discussion by council, or anyone in the audience wishing to comment? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please go ahead and take the roll call vote?
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the amendment is approved unanimously, and this change to the ordinance will become effective upon publication in the newspaper. Unfinished business, item number 10, is a request to waive the city's noise ordinance. This comes to us from Ashley Old in Annapolis, who hopes a wedding reception, a wedding ceremony and reception with music in the backyard of their home located at 20269 Gilman Street on Saturday, October 3, 2020, from 5:00 p.m. until 12:00 a.m.
Madam President?
Yes, Vice President Barr?
First, take a discussion, offer an approving resolution on this.
All right.
I'll second that, Madam President.
From Jolly, and we'll go to the audience, and I think that we perhaps have Ms. Ashley Old with us this evening. Good evening.
Good evening. I hope everyone's having a good night tonight. Thank you for having me.
And you're, you're planning your wedding reception on October 3, correct?
Correct.
All right. Council, do you have any questions for the petitioner?
Madam President?
I'm sorry, I couldn't see who that was.
That was me, Jolly.
Councilmember Jolly?
Yeah, just for point of discussion, have you notified your neighbors? Have you discussed this with them? Have you invited them to the wedding? What information do we need to know exactly in regards to what you've done?
Yeah, of course. So I definitely have had conversations with my surrounding neighbors, and they're all aware. I haven't had any negative feedback from them, so, you know, just, just hoping to be able to have some people over to celebrate. I don't think it'll be anywhere close to 100. I just kind of put that out there, just because that's what we're planning to invite, but, you know, not, not everyone shows up. So with that being said, with parking, just trying to find a spot around the neighborhood close to the house, there is a lot down the road that I am looking into to see if that would be an option to allow people to park at over by the auto shop off of Eight Mile and Engling. And then I know that there's like a storage space there now, so I know there's not a lot of parking, but I just wasn't sure, maybe you had any insight as to where I could get that approval, or who I would have to talk to, but, you know, I just, I don't want to upset a lot of my neighbors either, but it's definitely something that I've been looking into recently, just because a lot of things had changed. So actually, it went from a venue going into the backyard, so I've just been trying to do a lot of replanning lately.
Well, first off, congratulations in regards to your wedding. We hope that it's a great event. We normally like to see that you've spoken to the neighbors and that you're kind of considered in that regard, it seems like you are. In regards to the parking, you may want to contact the Livonia Police Department, just let them know that there will be a lot of cars parked on the roadway. I'm happy to support this, and I wish you the best of luck, and, you know, for the wedding and all the years going forward as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, if there are no other comments, we could go ahead, and if the clerk would please take the vote on the request from Ms. Old and Mr. Murray to waive the city's noise ordinance for their October 3 wedding.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
I, I think he lost his connection.
All right.
Isn't it McIntyre?
Aye. So we will, it looks like Vice President, there he is.
Sorry about that, I had some technical difficulties.
Would you like to query him on his vote?
Are you voting on that item?
Yes.
Okay. I vote aye.
So, we have unanimous approval for waiving the city's noise ordinance. Best of luck to you, Ms. Olds, and your fiance, Mr. and Councilmember Jolly, expressed, it would be a good idea if you're expecting a lot of parking on the street and traffic, to contact the Livonia Police Department, and just let them know, and if they have any, you know, if there are regulations about parking, they can help you figure out what those are, and to make sure your guests are in compliance, and no one ruins a happy day with the ticket.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And with that, we move on to number, this is unfinished business, item number 11, and this is the request to abandon the rider drain. It's come to us from Douglas Bohm, and I apologize if I'm mispronouncing that, from Livonia Comfort Care LLC for drain on property located on the north side of Plymouth Road between Farmington and Stark Roads, 34020 Plymouth Road, in the southeast quarter of Section 28. This is Council Resolution 442-18, and as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we do have new data on this item, and it is respectfully suggested that a communication received from our city engine, Mr. Zalinski, dated July 1, 2020, with respect to this item, be received and placed on file for the information of council. Council.
So moved.
For?
Support from?
McCullough.
McCullough, thank you. Council, any discussion? Anyone from the audience wishing to speak? All right, then we can go ahead, and Madam Clerk, if you would please take the vote on this item.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the, we passed the, sorry, now I'm trying to get back to the right point of the note. We passed the vacating of the rider drain unanimously. Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we go back to, we have no new business. We go back to the audience. If there's one, someone I'd like to communicate with council who did not do so during the beginning of the meeting, I see Councilmember Toy, we have someone from the audience that wishes to communicate with us. Did you want to?
Yeah, I'll yield to the audience if I may have the floor at some point.
Yes, you certainly may. Good evening. It looks like we have Mr. Breen with us. Let's see. Good evening, Mr. Breen.
Good evening. Very briefly, I would like to commend the professionalism of the Livonia Police Department, and commend Chief Cade for his willingness to engage in a deep level of dialogue. I had the privilege of serving on the Livonia Human Relations Commission for six years, including two years as chairperson of the commission, and I truly believe if the residents of Livonia and the residents of our surrounding communities really had an opportunity to hear all the steps that the Livonia Police Department implements in their bias trainings and their interactions with community members, then many of these fears that they have expressed over the past several weeks would be alleviated. So, I would really invite people that are having a dialogue with members of our community to really open themselves to being able to listen to our police department and really be willing to engage at an honest level with our department. And I again want to thank our police for their professionalism, and our Chief Cade for all the work he's done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Breen. It looks like we have an audience member, Scotch Muffin, who's already spoken. I will go back to Scotch Muffin in the event that there's someone else in the house that wishes to speak, but I'll remind Scotch Muffin that there is, that each person is only given one opportunity to speak during audience communication, either at the beginning or the end. So, let me go back. Trying to unmute. Still trying to unmute. There we go. Good evening. Heather?
Yes, thank you.
Do you have someone else, excuse me, do you have someone else in your home that wishes to speak?
No, thank you for the reminder of the rule.
Okay, thank you very much. Good night. All right, we have someone by phone who wishes to speak, and it looks like the last four digits of the phone number are 1172. Good evening. Good evening to whomever's on the phone with the last digits of 1172. Okay, we have you. You're able to speak. We're listening. Give you another few seconds if you'd like to join us. All right, it looks like they have no longer wished to speak. So, Councilmember Toy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick question of inquiry, because I heard a lot of comments about different data and things that people aren't getting, and I know that our mayor, who isn't with us tonight, she's on vacation, I guess, but my concern is that her letter is in our records because it was a very good letter as well, in my opinion, and explained quite a few things of what she had in mind moving forward, as well as the chief of police also had a letter to this council by email, if I'm not mistaken, Madam President. I just want to make sure that those are part of our record. So, if anyone ever questioned us on what we were doing or not doing, or what we communicated, that that is in our files and with all, you know, that all of us were privy to that information, because a lot of times, we all get busy, and we don't always get to read things, you know, in a quick manner. And I just, I want to make sure that there's that type of paper trail going on, so that, you know, those excellent letters that were written, that had explanation in them, will be part of the record and file, if we could, please. And I wanted to do that in a public meeting, so that others that might be watching, or listening, or calling in, would have, you know, that knowledge, because again, they were both very well-written letters in regards to the content and moving forward as to the opinions of both of those leaders. So, could we make sure it's part of our record?
Yes. Yes, we will.
So much. And one last thing I was going to bring up, and I have a deep concern as we look at our charter in our community, it was written many years ago by well-meaning people, and, you know, we even have amendments to the Constitution. And I was talking to a couple council members today that I had an opportunity to converse with, and I said to them, have you looked at the charter lately, as it addresses different things in the city? I mean, just a wide spectrum of things. And some of it is very, I don't want to say, but it's a little outdated in regards to some of, some of what it has in it. And the charter, as we all know, if we were to change anything in that charter, it has to go to the vote of the people, because the people vote on the charter. But I think that we really need to begin to review that charter, and where that belongs, Madam President, that at your discretion, if you were to set up a committee, or whatever your choice would be on that, it would be most appropriate, because I think it's going to take some time to review some of those elements that are in that charter. And us being a legislative body, I think it behooves us to begin to look at that in an expedited manner, because there's some things in there as we look at a new administration in our community, and new council people, both now and in the future, to kind of get some fresher eyes and ears on that as well. We've got two new council members that, you know, probably have some, you know, more openness in regards to looking at a document like that, and I know that Jim Jolly, with his expertise in the law, would be a welcome addition, as well as our own Kathy White, that served the city for god knows how many years, 30. Kathy White. So, any, I don't want to labor this, but I honestly think that it is long time overdue that we begin to look at that. And us being a legislative body, I think, you know, we're able to take a sharp look at that and get some things done.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Toy. I think that perhaps what we should do is look at this issue and determine whether it belongs in a current committee, or whether we should explore maybe an ad hoc committee, and then take that up as an item of business at the next regular meeting.
I like that. Thank you very much, Madam President and others. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me go back. Vice President Barr?
Yeah, Madam President, thank you. I had actually more extensive comments.
Oh, no.
Any comments? Are you good?
Again.
Can you hear me?
Now we can.
Okay, sorry. I'm not going to take the time to go through everything I had thought about saying tonight. There is one point that I just want to end on, though, because, you know, the billboard's there, several people have referred to it, and we'd be blind not to acknowledge it. And I'm just going to say this, I referenced earlier my time with a group called the Livonia Community Marketing Consortium in the late 2000s, and back at that time, that was a group of marketing professionals that came together for the purpose of trying to put together a consistent branding message for the city, which we felt was absent at the time. I'll also say that some, not all, but some of the motivation for that at the time was some accusations that, similar to now, that were also just as baseless from a data perspective as now. I'm not, I'm not going to say racism doesn't exist. Of course it does. I'm not going to say it doesn't exist in Livonia. Of course it does. And maybe at another time, it feels more appropriate, I'll even talk through some of those, some of those examples and my thoughts on that. But for now, I just want to say this, that group, we decided at the time strategically that our efforts were not best served to put together a fancy slogan, to put together commercials, to put together literature, although we did do a little bit of that. But we very strategically said, we have 95,000 people roughly in the city who go to work, go, you know, to their sports leagues, go to their churches, go wherever, every day, and those people from time to time get asked about why they live in Livonia, and those 95,000 people are way more effective at marketing this city than any brand or coordinated campaign could be. And, and so we focused our efforts on providing messaging to help with that. And so I just want to finish tonight by saying this, amongst all the things that could be said, that billboard does not define us. What defines us is the people that live here, who by and large have chosen to live here for a reason, and appreciate the fact that we live in a safe city, that we live in a friendly city, that we live in a city that is welcome to all, that we live in a city that is responsibly run, and it makes a place that's economically feasible and socially an inviting place for what I argue is the best place in Michigan to raise a family. So, again, maybe more discussions, more, I'm sure we'll have more opportunity to discuss these things, but for however long that billboard's there, as unfortunate as it is, and as unproductive and as divisive as I think it is, to the rest of Livonia out there, this does not define us. It hasn't defined us, it doesn't define us now, it's not going to find us. Keep telling people why you chose Livonia for your home. That's what defines us.
Thank you very much, Vice President Barr. Well said. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
I think that was Jolly and Barr. We will adjourn at 8:04, and we will reconvene at 8:15 for the study meeting. I'll remind everyone that we will remain live in between the hiatus between meetings, so you can turn your video off and go on mute if you'd like to, and we'll see you at 8:15. Thank you.